Alright, thank you for joining us this morning, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Montessorino Community Center Committee, uh, regular meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out the rules to assist a council member, staff, and members of the public to participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the community center committee regular meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report to issues such as being unable to hear a committee member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and unable to speak to the committee. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by law.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the community center committee to order on Wednesday, November fifteenth at nine oh two AM. Maybe start with roll call, please.
Yes, public member Harrington?
Yeah.
Public member M. Allen?
Yeah.
Public member L. Allen?
Here.
Public member when Gancy's not here yet. Public member Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Seiler?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Walsh member?
Present.
And Chair Mayor John.
Present.
We have a quorum. At this point, uh, we'll open oral communications from the public. If you're a member of the public, you can then speak about any item that is not on the agenda that's within the purview of the community center committee. Uh, if you're in chambers, which there is no one, you may approach the podium. If you're appearing online, please raise your virtual head.
No hands are raised.
No one's coming to the podium, we'll close oral communications. Have we received any written communications?
No.
No written communications. We'll go to the consent calendar. One of the consent calendars, probably minutes is November second, twenty twenty, it's your community center committee special meeting. And that's the only item on the consent calendar. I'll open it for public comment. If you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hands since there's no one in chambers.
No hands are raised.
I'll close my public comments on the consent calendar and bring it back, has everyone had a chest little group minutes? So move. I think we have a motion to approve the minutes, uh, the approve the consent calendar. We need a second.
I'll second them.
We have a motion, a second, maybe we have a roll call votes.
Yes, uh, public member Harrington?
I'm.
Public member M. Allen? I, public member L. Allen?
Yes.
Public member Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Seiler?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Approved.
Vice Mayor Walsh member?
Yes.
And Chair Megachan.
I, motion carries eight zero zero. It's nine oh four. Review and discuss Eagle Scout survey results. So, um, we, all of the items on the agenda are basically information only. There's no action that's required. We just wanted to hold this meeting and get things rolling and start to, uh, make sure that that we're, we're proceeding. Uh, one of the items, and I'll just give you the background on this. I think everyone knows that that there was an Eagle Scout survey that was done. Uh, and it was launched back in May or early June, um, and Johan, uh, did the survey and then it closed and we had some ninety-four results. Everyone should have got the draft copy. I believe that, um, uh, Boise circulated it and what we need to do is actually, uh, we wanted to give Johan a forum to present his surveys that he, it's his Eagle Scout project. And, uh, he couldn't make it today because he had to go to school.
He, he really would have loved to have attended, but he's got, yeah, and your daughter is actually here. She's like, I would have. He misses you guys, but, um, yeah, no, but he, yeah, he, he really, yeah, he wanted to also be here, but he, he's gotten a boring class, but he can't miss today.
So what we're gonna do is give him the opportunity to present at the next city council meeting.
Yep.
But, uh, it is important that, um, we kind of close this item off. We've got to start to close items off and get on to the next item like the vice it seemed to drag on. If you think about it, it started. The, the picnic was back in August and it's now November, almost Thanksgiving and it's a survey. So we gotta start to get the struggling. In any event, um, does anyone, I'm not gonna present the results of that survey because that's Johan's survey, but we do have another survey that's going on in parallel. And how many responses do we, we get? We got around fifty? We sent out forty odd certificates.
Yeah. I think it's fifty-four, right?
Fifty-four. So if we've got fifty-four, this is a much longer survey. This is one that you get five dollars, uh, come on for or whatever. Um, and those results will be coming at the, that'll be more of a draft written report. Um, because that's gonna go to our, uh, to the architect. Because it's gonna dovetail into the, into our furniture selection and how we use it. But probably the most important thing is it'll go into our policies and kind of finalizing things as we go forward and start to, to actually launch the community center. So, um, I'll have that information for you. Do you want to discuss any of the ro- results? Did anyone take a look and do you have any questions on that?
I read them. They're very interesting.
You did? Go ahead.
I just said they're very interesting. Only one person said we shouldn't have this thing. That I read.
Yeah, I didn't find them. I think the results were what I would have guessed in terms of the use for it. Uh, so I, I considered it a validation. Of our.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. The swimming pool was a good idea.
Yeah, that one made me chuckle.
That requires some design work.
A little mini port side.
Well, what I was surprised at was how people wanted to meet elected officials. And that was, I think, one of the, one of the highest ones. But there were some people, excuse me, that even though they said that they didn't support it with, was one of the first questions. Almost without fail, they then went and, and believed that there were reasons why they would go there. Which made me feel good that, you know, we're, we're appealing to a broad audience. Now, the, the flip side of that is being able to bring those activities together and make them happen. Is that just, you know, that requires what's called programming, right? But I think if, if we're pointed obviously in the right direction, otherwise all of us wouldn't be sitting here in the room. Um, but it, uh, a validation. The, the other thing that was very important that, that, that Eagle Scout survey did is it allowed us to create the follow-on survey that was much more in-depth, but it prioritized things for that survey. So there's no point in asking one of the most popular, popular uses as the very last question. So they kind of went in the order, the, the second longer survey went in the order that people were most interested in. So, um, but I thought that we had to give Johan a forum to speak and he couldn't make it. So you don't have a lot of, a lot more to say on this, but it, I think it is validation. Other comments by people? No? Okay. Uh.
Well, I think it's, um, since the response hasn't been robust, what about, like, every other week sending it out again as a reminder to please fill this out? It's very important in the direction that, that we're taking.
That's, that's a good point. Um, it has gone out a number of times, the request. And people get in it. I've been told people are inundated with surveys after you now go anywhere. Because if they, if they've got your email address, they wanna, you know, what was your experience? So people are kind of lukewarm to that, which is why we wanted to say, hey, if you do this, you get a five dollar, you know, copy. Um, but we could try one more time, but, but I, what happens is, if, if you can visualize it, you get a huge bump as soon as you do a reminder or something, and then it drops off very quickly. And we've gone through a few of those ways. And, you know, you can only cry wolf so many times, so gotta use our bullet wise here, but, um, we may try one more final push, but we need to close it off.
And saying this is the final, your last chance to be heard.
That is compelling sometimes.
Yeah, okay, so, so that is, we're gonna quote, we'll close the survey. Please get your result in by this day because we are closing the survey. Okay? Anything else before we move to the next item? Let me survey.
Would you like the people in this room to do the survey? Or I, I mean, we have a lot of stay already.
No, no, everyone is, uh, I had thought everyone in the room knew that and on city council that they should complete the survey. Absolutely. If you have a.
I would draw the question.
I did, but I haven't got my hundred dollars for.
That means I have my five dollars either.
I'll do it.
Okay.
But don't ten ninety-nine us, please.
Um. Yes, at this point in time, we will open the item one review and discuss the Eagle Scout survey results for public comment. If you're a member of the public, please raise your virtual hands since there's no one appearing in chambers.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. We'll close public comment on this. Thank you for reminding me. And, uh, we will now move on to the next item, discuss community center tasks, timeline and plan. Um, we don't have a written report on this. Um, but we do have Sarah Chapin and, and Daryl Jordan in the room here. And maybe they would like to make a comment on this item. With the, with a thing with what you've got there on the table.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you see on the table here, we finally have our set of plans, our first, uh, submittal of construction plans, hard project. So both this item and the next item is continued upon that set arriving. We were hoping it would be here a couple of months earlier than it is here now. Uh, but now that we have that, we can develop the timeline, the milestones on the project. Um, but a large scale scope of what may happen here is hopefully we'll have this out to bid here first of the year and awarding it in January, fifth or next year. That way we can get the contractor on site and board the actual timeline to build the project. We asked our architect on Monday when the mayor was here with us. He thinks it could be an eight to nine month period to complete the project. We're still looking into that. We also have a sub consultant. Now that we have those plans, looking at the actual cost estimate and defining each item in those plans. So we can have a good idea that we do bid this, what the project should cost and what actually goes out to the market, so. Any other questions we give you? Yes, sir. So a little math in my head, if all goes well and, and the correct bill arrives, we might be able to handle it by, uh, Christmas of next year. Absolutely. On that timeline, yes. Thank you. You have a question?
Uh, were you able to review the, so one of the things with this committee is what do we have to, to review and approve? And city council, their last meeting, they, or maybe it was two meetings ago, my memory is starting to, uh, things are starting to blend together. Um, they basically delegated authority to this committee to do a lot more than being just a recommending body. And what, what I heard from our community was that they want community involvement in this. And this is the forum for community involvement. If no one wants to say anything, they don't say anything. But at least we provide the forum we're meeting on a regular basis. You want something, come see us. You don't have to go to city council. You know, if you want to, you can, but, uh, the, what we wanted to do was be efficient at, at city council meetings and involve more of the community. So where I'm going with this is, uh, I believe, Daryl, you met with the city attorney yesterday so that she could identify every decision that has to be approved by this committee and by council.
That is correct. She's going through that. She received that yesterday about three o'clock. So she's reviewing the timeline with extensive list that we have to go through. However, we did concede that the city council only needs to either accept and approve the project to have it constructed and accept it at the end as, as approved. So there's only two major milestones for the coun- city council um, at this point to award, so we can spend the money and accept it once we're completed. Anything in the interim would be with this committee.
This committee, they sort of a working committee.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And I, I think that's a good thing because, um, when I went through the plans, there are a lot of items that you, let me say it differently. I'm pretty sure most of the people in the room here have been through their own renovations, their own project. And you can't document every single thing that has to be done. There are certain field decisions that have to be made. And I think that having this committee, uh, and meet on a regular basis, we can anticipate events as they're moving through construction and moving along. So then we can help make those decisions that aren't foreseen today, which is, which is valuable. And I believe when we were speaking with, with, uh, Gary Pulso the other day, he said that, you know, if you're, if you're building a, a project, uh, and unknown is the inspections, you know, how often can you get an inspection? How responsive are they, are the inspectors, et cetera? And he kind of looked over here and said.
Well, for us.
Yeah.
We have the inside track that are nobody.
So, you know, that's, that's all a positive thing.
I may add too, Mayor, we'll carry a ten percent contingency with the project, a ten percent cost of unforeseen items that we can bring back to you and say, we didn't see this, they didn't find this, or, so there will be monies to cover some of those unforeseen costs.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll opine on this and say, when I see people sticking contingencies in, I'm like, I understand unforeseen things, but it's like, uh, it's like, where was the planning on this? I'd like to see budgets pretty tight.
Right.
And, and say, okay, but anyway.
Our goal is not to use it, but it's there. If we run into a termite, we run into underground.
Um, there's the voice of many public projects. We did successfully, okay. Um, so are there any, are there any items that you'd like to highlight in the plans or in the timeline and tasks?
I think we'll have a better grasp on that at our next meeting, Mayor. Um, we're just breaking up both of those plans now to see what we have. So, um, we're still working with a couple of other sub consultants at the moment with landscaping and some engineering. Those should come online shortly as well, which we will bring back to council for.
So you, you did mention landscaping and, um, uh, can you describe what the status is of the landscaping? Because we're, it was unclear to me what the scope of the landscaping was. And then, and Mary Allen spent some time soliciting a question from people that would be interested in responding to, uh, that, that would be interested in being part of the design.
Interesting. Uh, right now we're in the procurement stage of getting a contractor actually awarded their contract to do the design. I believe the only design we have now is off the master plan, which is very vague, which you've all seen. Some work up here in the front of the property here. We're only place that we actually have native soil to work with, some soils, um, uh, storm drainage storage and such, with, from the green infrastructure projects out front. Um, so most of the landscaping you see is gonna be on the front edge of the highway here in front of the building. There will be some engineering back here with some, uh, previous pavement. That's typically not a landscaping design issue. So as we get that contract under, under contract and get them on board, it may be, um, a good idea to bring them here to one of our meetings and hear some feedback from their folks.
Let me say it differently.
Okay.
These people are potential bidders for the design.
Um, they are the current bid for the design work. Yes, we have one.
No, no, no. Mary got people that would be interested in bidding on the design project.
And I'll need to get those bids from them. So who do I talk to? Okay.
All right, we'll talk after meeting because I can send you the emails.
Oh, perfect. That'd be great.
Excuse me.
And we're gonna evaluate each other. Typically, we evaluate each other professionally services and staff, which are qualified, have insurance, and then we can move forward on this.
I think insurance is, is not an issue, but Lance though, uh, with Kirsty?
Kirsten.
Kirsten.
About, uh, licensing and the requirements to, uh, be able to do a municipal job in terms of the appropriate business of life licenses and contracting licenses. And so, uh, I think it's not an area of my expertise, but I think our city attorney, uh, there may be some well-known, uh, gardening services who don't have the licenses and therefore wouldn't qualify.
Correct.
But could.
But could if they, if the, the project was big enough that it was worth locating those licenses.
So let me get you the information and then, um, because of, because of the legal aspects of it. I know, I'll just.
I'm be glad you had that. I've bet at these multiple times.
Okay, well, I have to get it off.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing.
Well, thank you. So what we'll do is we'll have, we'll have this, um, as a, as an agenda item uh, for our next meeting, and we'll talk about, um, future agenda items at the end of the meeting. Um, so thank you, but I'll open it for public comment on this item. If you're a member of the public appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hands since there's no one in chambers.
Can you raise?
I'll close public comments on this. Get in, uh, go to number three, discuss community center cost estimate and funding. So, uh, again, we are waiting to put this out for bid, um, and perhaps, uh, Mr. Jordan can come back and talk to us about the, um, cost estimate that we, you can describe that process and, 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 um, that was something that was an unknown to us and is a surprise to me.
Yeah, um, typically on any type of a capital improvement project for municipality, um, during our due diligence, we have to get a cost estimate of some type to know what range we're looking at spending city monies for. Um, we, we can't go into a council meeting and say, we've got a great project. We don't know what it's gonna cost, but we're really interested in part of this. So, um, since we just received the plans on Monday, those again are the cornerstone of all these different tasks kicking off, including the cost estimates. So to go through line item by line item, everything in those plans will be covered in the cost estimate. So we're having a sub contractor do that now. Typically, the architect himself or herself would be providing this. Our current architect does not do that on this project, so we've had a sub consult, uh, this process to someone else. With that cost estimate, we'll roll that into the bid package that we rolled out and council. And you all will know what typically this project may cost us, what we're estimating. So we know whether it's the million dollars or the ten million dollars, whatever that range is, you were not surprised. Uh, hopefully. We do too. We do too, so, um, but, uh.
Who did you engage on this?
Um, one of Gary's sub consultants he used previously, I'm not sure what the name was. Somebody who would not be bidding the project, so there's no, um, favoritism provided to that person bidding the project because they would already know what the costs are and have kind of advantage. So we couldn't pick one of the local, like, Marseille or something like that, who may want to bid the project. We didn't want to get them involved and exclude them from constructing the project. So it's an outside, I think, the same San Jose firm.
And do you, did we already sign an engagement letter with them?
Um, we have not. It's going to a sub consultant to the architect, so. I'll be back to you on that.
Okay.
That'll be.
Okay, so this will obviously become, uh, root. We'll talk about it under future agenda items.
Uh, there's one other item that, sorry, do you want to tell me what's going on?
I don't. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow at two o'clock, we are going to see Cyber Manor, um, which is a, basically a low voltage consultant here in town. They have a showroom and, um, the owner is actually, um, lives in Montessorino, which is really nice. And that would be great if any of you could come, um, so that we can go look at the opportunities for low voltage. Um, you know, fixtures and lighting, um, switches and so forth for the community center, particularly for the cameras and so forth. So I just wanted to.
Give you a lot of the address, because I think I did make it.
Sure, sure. I, I think it's sixty-one university, but I will make sure, um, that you have the correct address. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
I'll add a little more color to that. This is really exciting. Um, it's six ten University Avenue. And it's called Cyber Manor, C Y B E R M A N O R.
Six ten University, you said?
Yep. And the gentleman that was here is Gordon. He's the founder. Gary's done a lot of work with him on other projects, and so Gary pulled him in, uh, on, was it, it was Monday at eleven, I believe. And, um, he, Gordon has created a location in his, behind his office, which is an old house, and he runs it as an Airbnb, uh, like a month, a, a week a month. And people are able to use it and experience all kinds of automation. And he wants to take us, this committee, through the, um, through his, his show home, if you will, and to give us some ideas. So that he's gonna come back with a proposal, I believe, as to designing the, where the, um, what the TVs are gonna be, what the, what the speakers are gonna be, where the, uh, to turn the lights on and off, to, to basically do all the functions inside the community center so that they're, they're, um, automated to, to a large extent. And one of the things that I found was very interesting is that, um, rather than having physical keys, you can have a physical key, but the way Airbnb works now is they want you to have a special walk on your door so that I can give, I can give you, you, you rent my Airbnb, I can give you a code and you can go up and use the code. But then when you're done, the code ends.
And the code identifies you, so your code is different from other people's, so you're saying you know who's going in.
Yep. So, which is interesting because from the community center perspective, if we're, if we are renting it out to local people and they, you know, it's only there until eleven o'clock when it, people have to leave, you know, I'm just picking it at time. So the system is that you can see what time the door closed and you can, and the lights go off at eleven oh five. And there's cameras there to identify activity after the fact. I mean, these are all things that help make it lower cost to operate. You know?
I think that sounds great. Well, we'll have to ask what all the back, since this is like a, um, a resource in emergency too. We'll have to ask when. We'll have to ask when the power goes out, if all the high tech stuff still works, which I guess I would if we have backup.
Yeah, I think we'd have to, for this to be an emergency uh venue, uh, we must have a backup generator. Or it can't be an emergency venue, right?
So, there's an extensive amount of information that was in our application to Silicon Valley Clean Energy. There will not be a backup generator because this will be uh, no natural gas going to it, there will be batteries. We haven't, the, we will be over spec on the batteries and it will have solar power. And it will have what's called a span panel so that you can prioritize which electrical loads. What on, inside the building will be able to run if the power is gonna go off for more and more hours. So that's, resiliency is absolutely critical for this.
Okay, one way or another, we'll make sure that when P G D goes off, this is open because uh, that was the number two. Thing on the survey that people wanted.
Make sure the cool code still works.
You, you know, when things are running electrically, it's a lot and you're, and you're not relying on P G and E. Or your electricity. The, provided you've got some redundancy, cause there's always failures, it can be much more resilient than otherwise.
May I ask, because we have a polar backup generator that does run on natural gas. Was that a cost thing to not run it on? I think there was a reason why running the backup generator on natural gas, which runs longer than batteries. Then there's a reason that that's not feasible to this project.
And called a five hundred thousand dollar grant for electrification only.
That answers my question.
Um, but, but, I mean, to, I, I, I don't mean to be facetious. There is a backup generator here and City Hall is separate from. The community center, but the two are gonna be joined. And it starts to get a little complex, but the, this side of the building of the, I'm sorry, of our civic center. We'll call this, both buildings together are the civic center, this is City Hall and that's the community center. City Hall will be running on the natural gas generator. And it will be isolated from the community center. When the power goes off, so the community center will run on the batteries. The community center will have solar panels so that it will continue generating electricity, creating its own electricity. So, we're drilling into details, but.
Okay, the, the point is, it, it's clear from what you're saying that this is pretty great.
Oh, an immense amount of thought, that's, and, and that is one of the most. Yeah, well, it was the most important thing that people responded to and uh, I will say that when. People ask, well, you know, my power went, didn't go off, why is resiliency such a big deal? I say, well, you know what, from city, from City Hall, there are people that live probably. Less than fifteen hundred meters the crow's lives that didn't have power for up to five days last year.
It happens.
Well, and Allison doesn't worry because they just climb over the back fence.
So I do tell that story periodically.
Lon and I are back in the neighborhood too, Lon and Mary.
So that's the community center cost estimate and, and funding, so um. If you're a member of the public and you'd like to comment on this, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised, I'll close public comment on that, um, any more discussion? No? Then, the next item, capital campaign, uh. What? We've done, it's missed a couple miles on, on what we thought our capital campaign would be. But we, it is exciting that, two things, first of all, we've got survey results and second of all, we've got. Uh, the plans now, so the, and what we really need to have is we really need to have. A timeline, because the first question that a donor, that donors have been asking me is. When is it gonna be done, when's the ribbon cutting? And, you know, other people have asked me that same question, and you can't do that without a project plan, you can't. I mean, can't have a project plan without building plans and blah, blah, you know, and.
They also wanna know what's the total project cost, so. We're in a loop right now, though we do have our first pledge, our former uh committee member. Jennifer Black, who's Jennifer pledged ten thousand dollars.
I have a question, do we have a, an idea of what percentage the whole project is gonna be, what percentage of that is gonna be donations?
So, um, we have had a number of, of financial estimates. So to answer your question directly, we thought that the total cost would be around one point five million. And that's just ballparking based on square footage and other features, it depends on what you put inside the one point five million, how much of that is landscaping.
Is that like the asphalt and all that or just building?
No, that was including the building. So then, in up that hundred thousand, initially we had thought that we would try to raise a hundred thousand. But we've kinda upped the bar to two fifty on that. Um, one of the, in terms of that one point five million, we received. Commitment for five hundred thousand from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, as well, another. Call it fifteen thousand, there was a grant before that, that expires on December thirty-one. Then, we approached Valley Water. And Valley Water is the, is the wholesale water company that then sells to retailers, it gets a bit. Just confusing to me anyways, like, why do I buy from, from um San Jose Water Company? But yet, Valley Water provides water to us, so it's kinda strange, but in any event. Valley Water has a small cities partnership in which they will, they will fund. Uh, water conservation features, the cost of those on a cost reimbursement basis. For something that they would do with a small cities partner. They've only had, entered into one small cities partner agreement, and so this is kinda new for them. And we had some meetings with them last year in late twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three, and they said, hey. Um, we will, we will move forward with the small cities partnership, but it has to be on a cost reimbursement basis. But also, we'd like to know how much your community is investing in this. So that's when it kinda was the catalyst to say, let's do some, some uh, have some contributions from the community. Unity so that Valley Water could match those, at least, or see that the community is behind this. And um, you know, we were thinking that they can only do it on a cost reimbursement basis. So you, versus Silicon Valley said, you know, we know it's gonna, you, you've gotta wrap all these things together, so we'll give you five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it doesn't have to go on line items, but, but Valley Water will be on line items. So, uh, I, ju- just a sec, let me see, I, I like you all, so I think. We should probably be in the neighborhood of fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars from Valley Water at a minimum. But the money that we get from the community can go to furniture, it can go to the capital cost. But then also, on an ongoing basis, we've got programming costs, and by programming costs, I mean. You know, if you want to have people that are coming in that are, that are providing some type of classes or instruction or. Whatever, just like through Los Gatos Rec, Community Wrap. You know, there's costs that you have to, have to that, so people could, could, could help contribute to those costs to offset those. I'm sorry, Mary, you had a, you had a comment or a question?
Excuse me, does Valley Water have any recommendations for people to do landscaping? Because that, if they work with somebody who is familiar with the issues. And the conservation issues, that might be another source to ask them.
Um, those were the exact people, they called them subject matter experts. That were, that came here and were part of those discussions, sitting here in chambers.
Okay.
Um, and, they, they promote different programs, but they. They let the private sector do that work, they don't do it for them. But I was saying to them, hey, these are the features that we could include, what other features would you like? What are you seeing that we could be a demonstration for? And there wasn't a, a real crisp answer for that. But, we're totally on the same page, and I think that. Well, let me, let me find just for a moment, when you look at water conservation, your single biggest use of water. That San Jose Water Company pipes to your property is for irrigation. And you can have a low flow toilet versus a high flow toilet. And in the quarters of a year, it doesn't move the needle that much, but when you're irrigating. Drought tolerant plants versus turf. It's an immense difference, I mean, the landscaping just by far and away exceeds all your water usage. And that's why one of the features that we're gonna have inside the community center is, is showing what. The irrigation controller is like a Rockio. And how you connect it and how it, you know, operates and is connected so that it knows when there's rain. And not raining the different times of the year, and you can do all this, all this programming. It's very easy to reduce your water consumption for landscaping, and that, that's what moves the needle, sorry if I was going on.
No, that, that's good information, but it still seems to me that that's a question to ask. Uh, potential, the potential uh gardening group is what's your experience with. Low water usage and, and gray water usage.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned gray water because that's what no one understands right now. And also, we have made a commitment to have an underground system. So that it may not be used a lot, but at least we have one. So that people can say, oh, I've heard about those, what are they, well, we've got one. We also have to have this uh green stormwater infrastructure project that is separate. That has to do with water coming off our parking lot, but it doesn't have to do with the water that comes off the roof. And the water that comes off the parking lot is, is very different than the water that comes off the roof. And the water experts say, never the two shall meet because you don't wanna contaminate your. Pristine, relatively speaking pristine roof water with the water that is coming off your, your parking lot.
So I take it in the roof plans, um. That that, there are no particulates that are being emitted which would contaminate the water coming off them.
So there will always be dust in the air, but.
There, there, I'm not talking about dust, I'm talking about the fumes, the, the gases.
The, yeah, no, so the, the community center is not gonna have, there's no, gonna be no open flame there, there's no fireplace. You know, particulate from.
The, I'm talking about from the material on the roof.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, it'll be um all inert. Yeah. Like, you're talking about the, the roofing material itself, yeah, no. California, we, we are lucky to, or some people, let me say to everybody. We're heavily regulated and you can't create roofing materials that emit all kinds of bad things. And if you do, you can't buy them in California, you may be able to buy them in other states, you have to bring them to California. It is funny because I, I, I was, wanted to buy a product and I couldn't buy it. Through Amazon because they don't ship certain products to California. Cause they're not allowed to be in California, anyways, sorry for going off topic, but.
Well, uh, when you're talking about water, that's on topic, yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Other comments? Questions, um, Lon, I think that your comment on how the different elements all feed in each other and we're cutting in a circle. We need to break that circle, that's why um, having those plans sitting on the table was such a positive thing to see. Um, with that, I'll open it for public comment. If you're appearing remotely, please, and you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your virtual hand. I'll close public comment on that, and then uh, our new business item at quarter to ten. Discuss website for community center, again, information only, but um, I did want. Everyone to understand, one of, one of the things that we, we had committed for. In the five hundred thousand dollar grant with Silicon Valley Clean Energy is that people. There, we agreed that we would have a website that would be, would be built, created. So that when you came to the community center, you could look at different features and there'd be a QR code. So you could hit the QR code with your phone and then you could see, here's what the background of this item is. Here's what a heat pump water heater is, here's how they work, and here's some pictures of the construction. Here's the um, the city, the city of Montessorino. Here's what their blending plan requirements are, here's, you know, just to make it really easy. For people to put in these different electric devices and the features that we're talking about. Here's uh, here's the importance of, of irrigation control, that sort of thing, so it's, so the website. Was, we, we had a five thousand dollar budget for the initial construction of it. And uh, it has not been, we have not engaged anyone yet. And we needed to get to a certain threshold to when we use it and, and for example, in the, in the procurement phase. Having those plans available on a website. Will be very helpful and we, we wanna get people excited about the, the project that are, that are bidding on it. Um. The other part of the website is, it will, there will go through the construction phase, but then we're gonna be into, well, once it's operating. You know, I wanna sign up to, for classes for doing whatever to use it, I wanna reserve it, I wanna have a private event. You know, we, we need to, the, the way the world is going, you don't go to the office and deal with this. So, we wanted to put this on the agenda because we'll be, rather than city council overseeing everything. They wanna have things at the committee level. Uh, so, so we can get public comment, so this is, again, not a solution. Because it's information only, no decision, but wanted to introduce this topic to you. I fully understand that this may be moving somewhat faster, I sense that you've got a comment.
So will the website play a role in a capital campaign also? That's seems to be one of the aspects that could really help.
Absolutely, so.
Yeah, I think we're, we, we've gotten a PSA public service announcement from K C A. And I'm sure there'll be a, a hot link to the website and probably vice versa. From the website to the service announcement, uh, so we can reach everybody and something people can refer to all.
What, what's the approximate timeline for the website?
So, let, let's actually talk about this for a moment because it's super important. One of the things is, is that the meeting tomorrow at two P M, we as a Brown Act. We as a Brown Act Committee can't have a quorum meet. Unless we're duly noticed, et cetera, but that's one of the reasons why our city attorney said expand it to nine people. Because then you can have the capital campaign, ad hoc committee, subcommittee. You can have people that can attend different events without creating a quorum, you know, up to four people attend events. There you go, and you know, even I I'm really pleased that everyone's here today except one. We've got eight of the nine, but. Really to get more than four people, that's not, I don't think that's that big of a problem. If we can get three to attend, I think that's a good thing, where I'm going with this is introducing the item, but then we can have a subcommittee. That is less than five, being more or fewer, and then we can work on things. Like the the website and get people involved. So.
But for the website. Is it possible to get somebody to donate their time, or is it just too big a project?
Well. So. I like the idea of people donating their time, but sometimes if they donate their time, they don't kind of. They it's something that goes along their timeline, not your timer, yeah, it's, and. I think that for the for the value of what it creates for the sense of urgency that we're gonna have to do. Because if you turn around and say, okay, it's five thousand to do the website. If we can inspire other people to bid on this, that say, hey, I see a huge marketing value. In being associated with this project, being able to show my work, to have a reference site. That's and we're gonna spend a million and a half on on the building. If they shave down their estimate by twenty thousand dollars or twenty five thousand dollars. Because they see a value in it, they want to buy the work. That's a multiple of the five thousand dollars for the website. But it's this is becoming, I'm getting a huge sense of urgency to move word on this.
It might, it might not work with this urgency, but I wonder if we could get like high school group or a local college. Because I'm sure there are lots of web design classes and kids sometimes move quickly.
So sometimes they do, we're also, I think, as as. Daryl Jordan said earlier, we are a city. Even administering this is difficult from our city attorney's perspective. Oh, well, who decides what words go on to the website? Who are the authors of the blog? You know, like when you start, I I want to balance the volunteer and the cost of it. With getting it done with, well, we have to review this, we. You're, you may start to, you you may be hearing some pain in my voice. And also, the web websites are. Yeah, the the initial cost may be five thousand, but that would be for the next few years, that would work at least to be done on the website.
Well, I think it's probably, probably the most important money we're spending because that is how the community is. Really wants to see what this project's all about. From a visibility perspective, on the website, uh as a reference point. And that any of the seal announcements or the public service announcements certainly will reference it or have a hot link to it. So uh I think it's critically important, the website.
Who maintains it for the city for other municipal perfectly?
That's a great question that I've asked multiple times, so there's the city's website, right? And within the city's website, there's different components, different elements to it. And then sitting off to the side, I will see, I would envision this website. Because the city's website is through uh basically software that's done. That's offered to cities across the United States, and this is a separate sort of thing. So um. I don't have all the answers. You know, but Lon's point is, this is very important, this is our base, and that's why. It's here front and center now, or I'm hoping to get to front and center. I'm wondering, well, we we can't form a subcommittee because that's not on the agenda, we can only, this is information only, right? But I what I think. You know what, we've got future agenda items, it's five minutes to ten because that clock is a few minutes fast. I'd like to open this for any other comments by the committee. No, um I'd like to open it to public comment, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak on this matter, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised, no ones in chambers, I'll close public comment on this item. And uh what I'd like to do is deal with it under, uh I'd like to get to future agenda items, if that's okay? Okay, uh future agenda items. What? What I would propose that we have for a future agenda item is having kind of recurring items. So for example, on this uh item number two and item number three. Right, so that at every meeting, we have discussed where where we are in the project plan. Where we are in the timeline, what are the milestones that are ahead in the next month, because we're gonna be meeting every month, right? And that's like a standard agenda item that uh our staff know that they're gonna be presenting a. And it's quote cast in stone, of course, we're nimble and flexible, but. But that's an expectation as well, you know, where are we on the on the cost estimate, the funding? How much has been expended today, where, what's the projected to the future, what's the view, you know, projected to the future for the timeline? So that this committee understands exactly where we are every month at a minimum. So those would be standing uh items. And then maybe uh, you know, the capital campaign, I don't think is is a standing item. And I don't think the website is because I think that that is something that people will be able to deal with remotely. And you know, you'll be able to see it, but that could be a separate ag- agenda item, but not a standing item. Just a.
But doesn't that have to be, if we're gonna form a committee for that, doesn't that have to be on the next?
You just said what I was about to say, that we should put forming a committee. On the next agenda, no, no, that's, we're on the same page.
That's critically important, I think, to have a good subcommittee on the website. You cannot design a website unless you know what you want on the website, you can't just give it to somebody.
Oh, come on, you just throw it over the fence and say, give, you're giving me this.
That would be critical, so. I know we can't do this, but you're whatever would be the first task of that subcommittee definition.
Today is the fifteenth. Could we get a quorum together for a special meeting for a single? Agenda item to form a subcommittee?
When would you like to do that, Mr. Chair, and what kind of questions?
Do you have to notice that or not?
No, we we are Brown Act, so so yes, I'll go ahead, see, I'll let you explain the requirements for a special meeting.
So we just have to quorum and we have to post at least twenty four hours. I'll be out at the office next week, the whole week, so if you guys want to do the week of twenty seven?
What day is it today?
Friday.
We do Friday? If we only have a single agenda item, we say, we'd like to have a subcommittee. And then we meet, it's it's ten minutes because it's a single agenda item. Do we don't have to have oral communications for a special meeting? We just, we just need a quorum, so we need five people to be here.
If it's nine o'clock this Friday morning, I can make it.
I can make it.
One, two, three, four. You're on the town.
I can't.
You can.
I'm a meeting. I can make it with Tim Burton.
I have a meeting with the county executive, okay?
All right, all right, I can't.
Uh, how about um? Tomorrow, Thursday, nine o'clock.
We have, we have to begin in the afternoon, actually, at this point. So that you guys will be in the.
Oh, we have the tour flight meeting tomorrow anyway, oh, well, do you want to have it after that meeting? That would work for me. Sure. One, two, three.
I could be there, but it has to be after three, about three thirty.
Okay.
Well, don't you, you don't want a forum for the technology meeting and you do want a forum for.
So so we need a forum to discuss the formation of the subcommittee, right? And then you guys, yeah, but you also want to avoid having.
But we need to have someone could, that couldn't make, you can't make the two o'clock, but you could make.
I can make three thirty, I can make three thirty on the sixteen.
Want to say four, want to say four o'clock then?
Uh, you're bumping into.
Okay, yours, let's, I'm here in three thirty then.
Three thirty works for me to bar.
On the.
Yeah, yeah. One, two, three, four, we need one more.
I could probably do three thirty.
Three thirty, we got five motion carries, cool.
All right.
So you'll have to send it out. Five hours. Yeah, so we will, so future agenda items, we will meet here in chambers at three thirty. Tomorrow, and we will, the single agenda item will be to form. A website subcommittee. That also, that sounds, yeah. Well, any more future agenda items? No?
I have one thing that might be, I'm not positive, but if you're gonna give to this capital campaign. People are gonna say, oh, man, you see, we've got a lot of money, so we need some incentives to for you to give to the capital campaign. Like, I don't know, you get twenty percent off rent room, or I think we should maybe discuss what those incentives.
Okay, so so let's, so what I'm hearing is. And and there's a capital campaign subcommittee. And we had one person resign from that, if you would like to join that, we can actually have that discussion. And we don't have to wait for a future meeting, because Lon and I are on that subcommittee.
We'd be pleased if you want to join our merry hand.
I beg your pardon?
If it doesn't, they're repeating.
He'd be happy to have you.
I'm I'm sensitive to your ten o'clock hard stop, Lon. So um. I don't. We can have a meeting of the subcommittee. Yeah, it's that Brown Act thing. But but we could, and and if there's a future agenda item, we could appoint you to the cap- capital campaign committee. Okay, so that's another future.
Are you doing that tomorrow afternoon?
I think, I think we can, I think we could do that tomorrow afternoon as well.
Put it on the agenda, yes.
Two items.
Two items.
All right, uh, I don't have to open public comment on that. Would any members of the committee like to, oh, you know what? We are not, city council is bound by a protocol or a procedure. Upon which they have an agenda, okay? Seems kind of strange, but it has to go according to our our regulations. And I want, we are considering adding announcements to our agenda. At city council, so at the beginning of the meeting, a council member can make an announcement. So for example, if there were the fires in Maui, we could have an announcement and have condolences to them, whatever, right? This committee, I do not believe that we have the requirements, but it would be good to have announcements on our agenda.
Our permanent agenda.
Our permanent agenda going forward, so um.
You want to add that to the agenda for tomorrow's special meeting?
I don't know if we need that. If you deter, if our clerk determines we need that, we could have a resolution, have announcements as an agenda item.
He doesn't honestly think we do it.
Done, I'm hearing a third agenda item happening.
You know, you always check the agenda, so I I don't think. Wouldn't have an answer only because our city attorney is actually a different city today, is not not available for answer, so. Maybe that's something I can work, talk to her and confirm, and I can have clarified.
I think what Lon is saying is, let's just. Anyway, there's no downside, yeah, let's have a, let's have a third item.
For the December agenda.
No, no. Special meeting tomorrow.
No, no, put announcements on our agendas for all meetings going forward. We will have that resolution tomorrow for special meeting, because if we don't need it, it doesn't hurt to have it. No, 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 no.
You just want to put it on.
It's just a motion, it's just a motion, yeah.
A motion that all future community center, uh community meetings will start with uh any announcement that they have.
Anything else before I adjourn the meeting, before we adjourn the meeting? Hearing that, um I will adjourn the uh regular meeting of the community center committee. On Wednesday, November fifteenth, uh ten oh eight A M.